Really, okay. Good evening, good afternoon, and welcome to the Northern City Council Board Session for July twenty first. I'll go ahead and call me quarter and ask for city reporters who help us with the roll call. Council Hamilton.
Here.
Council Garbo.
Here.
Mayor Igolpe.
Here.
Council Schultz.
Brother.
Council Slater.
Here.
Council Torres.
Here.
Thank you. All right, we move on to the next item of the agenda, which is public comments. We have you to be signed up online or in person.
We do not.
Okay, that next item on the agenda is number four, which is our Oak Street Park Playground Equipment Update. And our Parks and Facility Manager, are they going to be giving a presentation? Are we hearing from public works? Or do I consider it? That item at least may move to be moved.
Well.
You saw there.
What did he obviously not realize about it? In fact, I was hoping he was gonna address this. Uh, because let's see, what did I see on social media? And I don't do social media often, but this one person I read the popped up said that, oh, this is BS. North Bend can just go out and get a grant. It's a matter of priorities, and this is why that park's not fixed. And I so much would just love to just hit reply and say, yeah, come to our budget meeting, just see how big our budget is. And, uh, and.
They're in the area.
See that budget sometimes, and, and grants, grants are parked in the neighborhood or between. You really are.
What, um, I agree with it. Um, so my interviewee, so one is the Oak Street Park Playground Equipment in this repair right now, so.
It is. It's closed currently. Um, there are three major issues and several issues that are bad enough that they would need repaired. The first major issue is the slide's been torn off the structure three times. That's six thousand dollars piece. It's currently broken and gone again. Um, there is a trolley system like a zip line. The safety feature's been ripped off of that one. The bearings is destroyed. So that's an extreme hazard. Depend sure bite fingers, take them off. And the platforms, all the support boards on two of the platforms are broken and rotted through.
And so when that happens, do you just like, how do you make sure people don't get further injured on it? Do you just?
So right now it's roped all the way off, and there are signs on it saying that it is not safe to play on enclosed until we make a determination as to what to do with it.
And first blush added is just not something that is in the budget right now, and I think I heard our city administrator say that, you know, there's sometimes there's not a lot of grants for parks.
So, um, we generally try to get the large grant from, um, Oregon Parks and Rec. Um, that's actually being used by the city. We actually got that. Um, but it's being used at the visitor center. So it was previously gotten before this system failed. Um, there are some other small money grants out there, but we're looking at one of the options is replacement. A system similar to this last year was eighty five thousand dollars plus it'll be at least that in installation.
And I, I know, I think our city administrator said before that you all, whatever grants come across you in the publications that you subscribe to, or the, I know the cities really share. You're already on top of that, but if a resident in the community said, hey, I found one, they can always forward that to you.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I'm gonna guess that you guys are like all in interworkings and, you know, the city talks to each other and stuff like that. But as, you know, if, if somebody said, hey, I'm doing my own research and I found this national program, would they just email that to the, to the office or you, or like, what would, how would you want to receive that information?
Yeah, they, they can get that information right off the website, my contact information, telephone number, text and emails all there.
And so, um, cause like I said, I'm gonna guess that you are already enrolled in any sort of listers, but if somebody said wants to complain about it, but wants to help do the research, they are, we are always happy to see if we missed anything and there's something else out there.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we, we try to cover everything we can cover, but obviously we don't know everything. So, um, I am part of the Oregon Parks and Rec. I have several community, um, organizations that I'm very engaged with, and they also look for them. The college, I've worked with them, um. So we've looked at multiple avenues for replacement, for repair for those prices. I can get some money, but nothing to the degree of what we're looking at for a complete replacement at Oak Street.
And this isn't wear and tear, this vandalism and wear and tear?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, and so an overview kind of the system, I talked to the previous superintendent of parks. Um, this system was given to us from a preschool or some type of, of uh, independent school. Uh, they had taken it out because it had no longer fit their needs eighteen years ago.
Okay.
And we installed it. So the average playset that we're buying nowadays, their lifecycle is ten years. Um, so sadly, this is the first structure we're talking about. Um, but most of our structures in town have some pretty significant issues as far as meeting safety requirement, design feature, attenuating surface needs. Um, if you remember the master plan and you happen to have looked in it, at, at what will be required in the future. Uh, one to three years out was well over a million dollars, and that's just to bring things up to safety. Obviously, we don't have that money, so tonight I'm just wanna make you guys aware, Oak Street is at this point an unusable play feature. We have three options with that play feature. We can attempt to repair it. Um, none of the original manufacturer's parts are available. Uh, even the side which I had ordered once, I had to get out of Canada. I can no longer find, so I can't find original manufacturer parts, which is a requirement to bring it back to the safety code. That's not saying I can't go out and buy treated wood, repair the platforms and make it usable. It just will not meet ASM requirements. So there's no way without original parts for me to bring it back to what a playground safety inspector would say is safe. So we have the repair. We have the replacement option, which estimated, I've talked to four different playground companies. Um, again, about eighty five thousand dollars for that size. That's a seventy five person, and that encompasses just like in a room, everyone that would be there, so seventy five people. We're looking at eighty five thousand dollars for that set. Now that has to be installed by a certified playground inspector, or installer to meet ASM certifications, then we would be good to go. We could put that new attenuating surface. We just refilled that playground with the, the actual, um, engineered wood mulch. So we'd be able to put that back in. That would save us ten or twelve thousand dollars. But we're still looking at realistically to put a playground back in there, a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, and then the other option we would have is to remove that structure and try to reimagine that space as an open space or some other use. So those really are the options that I, I have for you.
What would it look like if, say, there was a group of people in town where this was their passion? They just wanted to raise money and come up with a plan. Um, you know, is that something where the city would be open to donations for park equipment? Like, I mean, I'm just saying like, you know, looking from like the side of like, what if people really did wanna get involved that way and try to, you know, that was their passion? What would, how would they do that?
I'm, I'm sure we can come up with mechanism is the big issue with parks equipment is very, very seldom do you see it bought piece by piece anymore. Um, because that just leads to so many complications in the design and the safety features. So you almost always see them purchased as an entire unit and installed. Um, so it would be great, and there are several, I think, people in that particular neighborhood and that community that use that part and be more than willing to donate some. But we really couldn't do anything until we reached the, the complete amount. And I don't know how finance would deal with that or how soon we could actually get that, but I'd be more than willing to help with whatever we would need to do, social media, advertising. Um, I've had people reach out and ask about, you know, being able to donate. The danger there is, um, much like another one of our parks, State Street Park. Um, before I came, that playground actually was a donated playground. The community got together, they purchased the playground equipment and sold it. The part about that that worries me, and I haven't done the research yet on that particular playset. I don't believe that it's up to ASM standards, and I don't believe it was installed by an ASM. That doesn't mean that it's unsafe at this point. It just means it's not something I could do at Oak Street.
Yeah.
Um, so at Oak Street is gonna cost us significantly more money just because everything has changed than the last, you know, five to seven years. Playground safety has really become a na- a national thing, and I'm so, one of the first things I did when I got here was got my certification as a playground inspector. Passed that, so I'm allowed to inspect those all across the United States, and unfortunately, I also sworn off when I inspect those to abide by the rules and close them if they're not safe.
Well, yeah, just, just to make sure that I understand this, the equipment is a certain amount of money, and it's almost the same amount of money because of the specialized inspection.
Well, it, it really is the same on just about everything. If you go to have your car fixed, you could pretty much count on whatever you buy being pretty close to the same amount of, of work. So work is going to be pretty close to the same amount.
Yeah. Just in case people are wondering, like, they just said eighty five, but you're like, no, it's really.
It is the way it sounds, like, it's so expensive.
It, it's just because of the requirements. It has to be dug so many feet. It's very, and if you're off by five inches, the playset is, I mean, they'd have to tear it out and, and redo the whole thing to get it installed. They're very tight spec.
Yeah, which again, this goes so deep.
Well, I was saying, I know if I saw this story, it's gonna lead to a joke about, uh, head my, you know, hitting my head, but in nineteen seventy eight, before there were wood shoves on the ground up at Hillcrest, I have still a star on my head with the stitches that I had. But we'll just leave it at that. So I understand the playground safety is very important because we have many, we couldn't have as much.
So, yeah, this evening, the reason I was on there is, is basically I need the council really to think about one of those three options.
Um, it makes me nervous to think that it's left. Like, at some point, you have to really take the whole thing down because people could get into.
Correct, yeah.
And that seems like it's almost imminent.
And, and that's really, I mean, I, I'm a little concerned. We go back weekly, redo the netting, redo the signs. Um, I would soon make the decision sooner than later. I don't, I mean, it's entirely up to you. I don't control the budget. I don't have it in my budget currently to replace that. I don't feel as a safety inspector that repairing it will ever lead to it being safe. Um, we could remove it ourselves, city employees with tobacco and stuff, so you're looking at man hours, probably overall two or three days for staff equipment, a few thousand dollars.
Following your description of what's going on and the repairs you've done and what's, what's happened with that, it would seem that removal would be the best course of action, at least for what's there at this particular point. And then we'll find the direction or chart the direction, which I know you're always looking at. You mentioned the grant some pieces to do that, but it's been repaired at least once and it's still destroyed and had it just sounds totally unsafe, which we'd be much better off if it wasn't there at all.
Well, I'm thinking that it's over eighteen years old potentially as well, when you said that ten years is the kind of the average or what we, yeah, so. Got some good use out of the phone, and, and since we are at work session and it's a little bit more informal than normal, um, I do see a hand in the crowd. I usually don't take questions unless it's during public comment, but it is.
I was there two weeks ago.
It is a little bit informal, so I'm gonna go ahead and like ask.
I was there two weeks ago with blankets and with the screws popping up. My, my son's little girl about, about all scraped up, just sitting on it. The boards are uneven, and I also did the zip line and pitched my hand, so it is not, it's not safe. You're already getting minor injuries there, and yesterday there was a homeless person behind your netting camping underneath.
Well, since we know we don't have money to repair or replace, I will just make a wish we should have.
Well, yeah, we can also, we can, we can make outs to this space.
They all, political motion, just.
It's not, it's not a separate motion. The, the reality is, is what staff was saying is, you know, as, as he rightly stated, the council controls the budget. So you, you do have emergency funds. There's not a recommendation coming from the city administrator, um, you know, to move emergency money, especially since I need, need a quarter million dollars for this roof on this building alone. Um, and so however, um, it's, it's prudent that we bring this issue to the council. Let you know that we've got a park in serious disrepair, that we don't have money. Um, and, uh, if you all want to, you know, move forward with, with the process of moving money out of reserves that are already whittling, um, that's always the option. Otherwise, staff will do what we need to do, which is remove it. Uh, but it doesn't behoove us to move it unless we've informed the council appropriately. Uh, because there'll be even more social media commentary. Folks just think we can whip brands out and very much like the pool parks, you know, we, we have national databases, you know, uh, that we search on a regular basis for grant opportunities. There's just not a lot of brands for recreation. Um, and it certainly doesn't pay for all of it. Um, most of them are, are threshold, and then you have to come up with the rest. And so, uh, very much like McCapa, they, they've been in fundraising mode for many years. And, um, and that facility is not fully open. You certainly see even with the airport, I mean, the airport, Hays Park is going to take a lot of fundraising before, because when those price tags came in, there was a lot of sticker shop. Um, and, and I get it, um, active recreation versus passive recreation.
Yeah.
They're two different things, and liability is another, and so I appreciate, you know, the, the staff presentation because nobody wants to get sued, um, you know, by going out and putting in something and then stepping on the line for, well, we just did what you could do fifteen, twenty years ago, which was, well, it's good enough to government work, you know, we got it put together. But, yeah, and then the vandalism is not a hundred percent um, homeless by any measure. In fact, um, police have been out there on various calls. Um, most recently I saw one where, uh, uh, youth were out there with shovels and digging up the park and creating their own bike park with berms and everything. And so it's, again, it's, it's a community effort to police that park. And unfortunately, over there, we have a couple of active citizens that, you know, pretty proactively and quickly alert us when they use the activity that's disconcerting.
Well, it sounds like from, and not Hamilton has, Council Hamilton has this, you know, here, but it sounds like I'm hearing definitely consensus from the council already that we cannot have people getting, you know, in a situation that we're, we're looking to, I like what we're so reimagining, like that space would probably, there could be some things that are done where people could, how do you say, passively recreate?
Yeah, that's, that was my question. So there is restrooms at that park, right?
Correct.
And so if you were to remove the playground equipment, the pavilion is still there, right?
There's still a pavilion, there's still restrooms, uh, there are benches there in the wooded area, the swing set, which is a separate structure would remain.
Yeah.
Um, and then we, you know, I've reached out to several different park systems. We're not the only ones facing this type of thing. Um, so I've, I've reached out to kind of see what other people are doing, if, if they're in the same boat, and how they're reimagining that space, what they're doing with that space. Um, you know, i- if nothing else, you know, we could dig out the engineer wood mulch, put sand in, and it would be a giant sandbox for the kids to play in. I mean, there, there is always something we can do with it. Um, and we definitely don't want to deprive the, the community and, and to, you know, as the city administrator said, I'm not, basically, I just want to inform you, these are our options either what we're looking at, because when I remove a whole play section, you're gonna hear about it.
Yeah.
Um, and by no means do I want anyone in the city, including my boss or the council, blindsided by the, the whole place that is gone. Why? And, and that's why I had, that's why I put, that's why I closed the system.
So you don't need a fourth motion tonight or tomorrow, but if you're looking for extra, like the council or even as a form, um, I'd say, and, um, love to see some sort of reimagined space where kids and families could still enjoy it.
Right.
Yeah, sound good?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely. Thank you, Karen. Appreciate the information.
So the next item agenda is, um, five, which is our stormwater system upgrade in coordination with more than housing redevelopment. Have some information on page one.
Yeah, we wait for it to get up to the little smoke.
Yeah, I would like to take, if I may, take this opportunity to introduce our new planner, just 'cause most of you haven't met her. This is Black Pandey. She's our city planner. Uh, been here a full two weeks. I was gonna bring her in her first day, and she said, no, please, but, um, so she's got a masters in urban planning, bachelor's in architecture, and is coming very long. I want to do that for her, just so I can.
Okay, so tell us what's wrong with stormwater.
This is more of a heads up primarily because it has to do with the North Bend Family Housing Project. Uh, the plans they submitted and we approved originally were in error. So when we were doing our inspections on site, we met with the contractor. We found out there were some issues with what they were proposing to do on the plans that we approved. Mostly this little history on the site, at least this is my best guess. Uh, when they built Banger originally, there was probably a ditch that ran through the property. So when they built the school, they threw it in a pipe, covered it up, nineteen fifty-two. We have no record drawings or record of what was there, so uh, the engineer that designed this originally looked in one end and said the pipe's this size. And then as we were working through the site with the contractor, we found out that there's weird connections, different pipes. Regardless, we did not have a pilot with this project, so we're not collecting any tax dollars from this project. I wanted to give you a heads up of my intent or proposal, just because of the kind of, this isn't a moneymaker for anybody. Uh, they're gonna be replacing a pipe bigger than they proposed. That's gonna be on their dime. I'm not gonna allow anything smaller. Um, but both ends where they connect, um, are substandard structures that were built in the fifties. Uh, the upstream end, we're gonna have to replace that pipe in the near future. And when we do that, I propose to replace that structure. The city takes care of that totally. The downstream end, they can connect to it, but it's a structure again that was built in the nineteen fifties. Uh, and to replace that structure along with their new piping, which is part of our system through there, but that structure, they could connect to what's there. It's not gonna last very long. So as part of their work, I've requested pricing for them to replace the downstream manhole, which typically it'd be a sixty inch manhole, be around ten thousand dollars. Now, they were gonna have to make a connection anyway. So I'm gonna not pay the full freight on it, but otherwise we'd have to go ten, fifteen years from now, dig up a brand new thing and put in a new manhole. So I, and just because of kind of the sensitivity without them having a pilot, I wanted to bring it forth before I brought the pricing to you. I haven't seen it yet, but that's, I just wanted to alert you to this and why we're considering it. It's that simple. No decision made tonight, just, you know, if there was any questions regarding this, I'd be more willing to answer them.
Just like you mentioned, I thought the report was an excellent report, and lady, that would be very good on that, so that makes sense to me.
Because I didn't wanna come in here blindside you with, oh, I promised to pay for this. Yeah. But, and that's.
Okay. Right, thank you. And so that takes us to, um, the really the last item on the agenda tonight, which is to review the city council agenda for tomorrow evening. And, um, all of us, our city administrator, he wants to walk through that. It looks like our first big day is a ceremonial swearing in.
Yes, we have a new officer, Keller Salmon. Uh, yes, I know the tech's having this on. And so just, uh, it's up. And, uh, we, on the consent calendar, as I always say, if there's an item that any member of the council wants withdrawn, please let us know. We will pull it out. Second is there's no discussion, so tonight's your discussion, and when do your motions made? Tomorrow. It's a first, a second, all those in favor. So the first one you have is your former acknowledgement of city dispersments. Uh, we used to call it like acknowledgement of the bills, and so, uh, I renamed that, that's all me, lame me, not Jeff. Um, we have confirmation of appointments, and so we have the, um, uh, applications to the North Bend Main Street Board. Um, after discussion, uh, with the, uh, state, um, and then also, uh, the fact that our program is growing, uh, it was recommended that we expand our board with some additional members, and so we have, um, uh, uh, they have reached out collaboratively. These didn't just like show up in applications. Uh, board members actually have talked, spoken to each of these. Um, so there are three, Julie Reed, John Gibson, and Sharon Watson, all that would like to get involved, um, as board members on the Main Street program.
That's great.
Um, then we have the purchase of the safety drone. Um, that's a hundred percent paid with, uh, grant funding, uh, from multiple sources. Uh, there is a nationwide shortage because of, uh, chips and parts and things, however, there is one tentatively reserved for us, so we have a hold on it. Um, so this will allow our fire department to move forward with our search and rescue, um, drone, uh, uh, program. Uh, we already have two qualified brothers.
One police officer, one fire.
Yes, one police, two fire, or one on one, yeah, one on one, yeah. Talk about collaboration, police and fire. Where was I? That office took a photo. Maybe I did take a photo. Where, I, I mean, I just love the way that our department works together. When you go to other cities, that's not always the case. I mean, it is, it is a different dynamic there. Um, and then the last is authorization for strategic planning services for the North Bend Public Library. We have our, um, uh, head librarian here, our library director, um, they have done strategic planning, and it's time to do it again. And so if you have any questions, just want to want to present it if you want to, but those are consent routine items if you will. Are there any questions on A, B, C, or D from a member of the council? And so Steph, bloodly, here to answer.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we got you. Um, while we're coming tomorrow, if there is any, uh, next is, uh, this is a follow-up. This is resolution three, three, six, nine. This is the establishment of the citizen charter review committee and appointment of members. Tell page thirty-seven of your packet. Uh, I appreciate, um, everyone who has sent in, um, uh, Recommendations or appointments, um, so if you're all good with the list. Um, you can discuss them or just say, we're all good, but it's all page thirty seven. Is it? Like page thirty seven, resolution three, three, six, nine, and then.
Well, when it's all right, yeah, so first we do the charter for agreeing the committee, then I think we will quit it already, correct?
Yeah, yeah, it's like a one, two.
Yeah.
You have to create and confirm.
We have one, two, three, four, five people in addition to the. Two people story, and so that's, that's good, that's seventy people, I think that's, I think we're looking good there.
So I'll good with that? All right, we'll continue to move forward with that then. Um, all right, then um, you have resolution thirty, three, seventy, this is all page forty one. And this is um, changing things up a little differently. Um, and we have our city attorney online that's gonna explain this. Um, but it was something that came up uh, from staff. And we realized that we needed to address this so that we maintain. Uh, compliance the uh, and with, with state law. So uh, Mr. Whoop, you got the floor?
All right, thank you, good, uh, good afternoon still. Um, yeah, so the OLCC asks local governments, whether it's a city or a county, to make recommendations. To people who are applying for a license or renewing their license. And um, there's a twenty five dollar default fee that cities can charge. Um, if cities adopt guidelines that are subsequently approved by OLCC. Then the city can charge um, slightly higher fees, I mean, this is not mu- money making by any means, but. Uh, help defray some of the, the staff time. And so what this is, this is simply the, the, the guidelines that the city would review in making its recommendations. And the statute is a little bit quirky in the sense that first the city has to establish the guidelines. Get those guidelines approved by OLCC and uh, assuming those are approved. Um, then we would come back and actually adopt a, an, an ordinance most likely. Uh, establishing this criteria and, and setting the, the fees. The fees are set by statute, so it's not something that the, the, the city charter restricts. Because there are caps and there are uh, standards for those, for those fees. So for tomorrow night, all you're doing is approving this resolution, which is setting the guidelines. And again, these guidelines are all set by, uh, by state law. And then staff will submit these to OLCC, assuming they're approved. We'll come back at a future meeting to actually uh, adopt something that the city can. Um, use to make recommendations and, and collect some fees.
Thank you. Thanks Mark, all right, uh, the next then is the confirmation of the actual appointments to the charter review committee. Those are on page forty five. Um, you see each of the nominations and so um, that is that process. And we do not expect any effective session. Um, city administrators report, committee reports, council comments, other business.
Okay.
German, and then that you met a mayor.
All right, well, it looks like it's gonna be a three night meeting tomorrow night, so um. And I don't know if there's anything else that anybody has, we can save it for our comments tomorrow night, so we'll go ahead and enjoy the meeting.